Welcome, everybody. We'll bring this meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first item is a reading and approval of minutes from the October 22nd, 2024 Regular Council Meeting. May I have a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
So moved.
Second.
A second. Any questions, comments? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. All right. Thank you. Minutes are approved. We'll move on to the next item. Resolution approving employment contract with new city manager, Michael Rosar. At this point, I'll turn it over to City Attorney, Mr. File, for more details on that.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes. What we're doing tonight is, we have already, obviously, hired Mr. Roser as our city manager. This is the employment contract that you all have had. This is just simply a signed copy of it. Wanted to have a resolution adopted by council, and we will place this contract in our minutes. And so, if you have any questions about it, this is, you know, it's basically for three and a half years. It's for $126,200. That's his salary. And the terms are terms that this body has discussed on several occasions. It's the same contract, it's just a copy of the signed contract. So just take a motion to adopt the resolution.
All right, very well. May I have a motion to approve the resolution as presented?
So moved.
A second. Any questions or comments for Mr. File? And his start date is still December 2nd, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Great. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. So moved. Thank you, council. Next item is the second reading and public hearing of an ordinance for the Ten Year Comprehensive Plan. Again, I'll turn it over to Mr. File.
Thank you, sir. Yes, tonight is the second reading. We had the first reading of this ordinance on the 22nd of October. What this ordinance does is it basically adopts the Beckley Comprehensive Plan. It's the update. It's titled Beckley 2024 Comprehensive Plan Update. I will read this by title. And of course, we have Donnie Morgan here, who is the code enforcement officer, who really headed up the city's efforts to put together the update of our comprehensive plan. He spent a lot of time, he and Angela King and others worked hard on this. They had a number of meetings. They had public hearings, and this was recommended by the Planning Commission. Once I read this by title, I'll open for any comments from the public. This is an ordinance titled Ordinance Adopting the Beckley 2045 Comprehensive Plan Update. And at this time, I will open the public hearing and ask if anybody in the public has any comments they'd like to make, either in favor of or in opposition to this comprehensive plan. Appearing to be no comments. I'll close the public hearing.
Mayor?
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the ordinance?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
So again, any questions or comments for Mr. File? No? Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. So moved. Thank you, council. Next item is the first reading of ordinance authorizing city of Beckley to accept donation of real estate located in the city identified as Lot 1, Block 20, Beckley Court ad. Again, I'll turn it over to Mr. File for more information on that.
Thank you, yes. This is a small lot that is off of Antonio Avenue. There is a basketball court that is right beside this lot. The city of Beckley owns several lots adjacent to this property. The owner of this property, Jennifer Stump Dilly, has offered to donate this to the city of Beckley. Her husband had owned it. He passed away. She has no need for this lot, and this is a lot that could be used by the city. It could certainly enhance the basketball court and enhance that property over there. It's something the city would maintain. And as it stated, it is adjacent to the basketball court, which is on Antonio Avenue. So this is an ordinance, I'll read this by title. If you all approve tonight on first reading, we will have second reading and a public hearing in two weeks. This ordinance is titled Ordinance Authorizing the City of Beckley to Accept the Donation of a Parcel of Real Estate Located Off Antonio Avenue in Beckley, Raleigh County, West Virginia. And I will say for record, the legal description of this property is surface of Lot 1, Block 20, Beckley Court Edition. So, Mayor, this would require a motion to adopt the first reading tonight.
All right, very good. May I have a motion to approve the ordinance as presented?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments about it? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Okay, so moved. Thank you, council. Next item on the agenda is the first reading of ordinance authorizing city to enter into Pinecrest Property Agreement with Raleigh County Commission titled Agreement for Transfer of Real Property Interest. Mr. File, you want to speak more on that, too?
Yes, sir. I'd be glad to. This is an ordinance that authorizes the city of Beckley to enter into the agreement with the Raleigh County Commission. This is an agreement that we've discussed in numerous meetings. This sets forth the terms of the transfer of the property. The Raleigh County Commission this morning, in their regular meeting, considered this same agreement, and they passed this agreement and forwarded to the city. Tonight would be first reading for the city, and if the city passes it tonight, then we will have a public hearing and second reading in two weeks. Now, this is the agreement that is referred to in the ordinance that was adopted, I believe, at the last meeting. That ordinance was adopted subject to an agreement between the parties of certain terms. This agreement sets forth all the terms. These are the terms that have been discussed in workshops and at council meetings. I think each one of you all have a copy of the agreement in front of you. And I have actually the signed copy in my office, ready to be signed if the second reading is passed in two weeks. The county commission's attorney, Bill Root, met with me this afternoon. He advised me that the county did approve entering into this agreement with the city of Beckley. This is the agreement that authorizes the transfer of the city, excuse me, of the Pinecrest property from the city of Beckley to the Raleigh County Commission. And they also have authorized and set aside, basically, $1.4 million, is my understanding, to use for the beginning of the infrastructure construction. And that is what they will do. That is, this is a property that is for economic development. The first step has to be the development of the infrastructure. And the county commission does have the funds to proceed with that. And tonight, I will read this by title, and then if council approves, we will have the second hearing, or, excuse me, the second reading and public hearing in two weeks. This title is Ordinance Authorizing City of Beckley to Enter Into Agreement with Raleigh County Commission Regarding Terms of Transfer of Pinecrest Property. And this is an agreement that Bill Root, their attorney, and I sat down on several occasions and went over. The county commission was not hesitant at all to enter into this agreement. They accepted the terms. We were asking the city to do the same. And I will say Gavin Ward worked with us also on this agreement. So this requires a motion to adopt.
Mayor, I have a question. May I ask a question?
Sure.
Okay. Because there are so many items to be read over, can we have a little bit of time to go through all of this, Mr. File? I mean, do we have to do this this evening?
I'll go ahead and ask, and then you can comment after that. So, at this point, may I have a motion to approve the ordinance as presented?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any questions?
That would be my question. There are so many things to...
We have a second reading on this. I think that's plenty of time to pass it, and then we can have public comments. At that time, is my personal opinion.
Yeah. And I think it's been three weeks, and it's already passed, so...
Well, we didn't have all of these things included. I mean, these are the items, but that's fine. That's fine. You have a first and a second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay.
Nay.
So moved. Thank you, council.
I just have one question. I did read over it. I had an opportunity to read over this on, it's just a correction, it's typographical. On page eight, letter, number five, letter C, that just needs to be Patty. It's P-A-T-Y.
What is it?
It's just a typographical error.
Oh.
On page eight, number five.
C. Yes, it's Patty of the first part.
Patty.
I just let you all know that.
Yeah, that's good. Thank you.
Janine, we were testing you to see if you... Thank you.
All right, moving on. Award of bid for the milling and paving of G Street from the intersection of South Canals Street to the intersection of Candidate Street. At this point, I'll turn it over to council member Reidy for more detailed information on the bid process.
Yeah, we received two bids on this paving of G Street, one being from AAA Paving and one being from Southern West Virginia Paving. And it is my recommendation that we accept the bid from AAA Paving for $51,975. And that's in the form of a motion.
Second.
Any questions or comments about it? All right. All those in favor of giving the bid to AAA in the amount of $51,000, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Okay. So moved. Thank you.
And I just want to thank Pam and the residents on G Street. They also wanted me to tell you thank you all, so...
Next item on the agenda is a notice of application for West Virginia ABCA Class A license at 113 Main Street. At this point, I'll turn it over to Captain Morgan for the reading.
Michelle Rodelini and Rosemary Corley, applicants, RBCH Pictures Incorporated, doing business as Uptown Dish, 113 Main Street, map 18, parcel 8, has filed a notice of intent to apply to operate a private club, private line restaurant, or tavern at this location in the B3 Courthouse Square use district. This location, 113 Main Street, in the intended use, private club, private line restaurant, or tavern, is a permitted use in this B3 zone. The pub's location is more than 300 feet from any residential district or office residential district, transitional district, which meets the requirements of any zoning prohibitions for this use and location. The location is not in an area designated by common council for the use of community development block ring codes.
Thank you. Next item is old business. Council members, is there any old business?
Well, I have some. I know a lot of things are on hold right now, but I did ask, one of the first weeks that the new council was here, if we could reinstate the public's ability to call in to the meetings. I don't know who to refer that to.
Yeah, I remember. We discussed that.
Yeah, if that's will, we can set it up. That could be done.
Okay.
That's a move of council.
Do I need to make a motion, or do we need to follow that?
Does anybody here object to that? Do you have any objections, and we can go ahead and set it up?
Mr. Kelly said it could be traced so that we could know who's actually calling in.
Yeah.
And we'll have to require them to identify themselves.
Yes.
Whether they're a resident of the city or...
Yeah, and that was the only major issue why it got canceled. We had someone call in and wouldn't identify themselves.
Yeah.
Went on a nice little rant, but I'm in agreeance with Natalie on letting them be able to call in.
Okay.
Mayor, I would also like to implement, we used to invite different pastors to come and say a prayer before council. Are council meetings allowed to have that, Mr. File?
I believe they can have it, actually. I certainly have no objection to that. We need to open that up to any religious organization.
And who gets to, who would get to choose the pastor? And I think it's a great idea. I know we've discussed it several times, but who would be the one that gets to make that decision?
My suggestion, I don't think they're going to have a lot of pastors trying to get here. We've found in the past, sometimes it was difficult. They used to do this.
Okay.
But if council has pastors to be contacted, we could certainly contact them and set it up, if you all...
Maybe that's something like when Mike, or Mr. Roser gets in and him and Ryan can kind of work on it, because I believe that's how it was in the past. Correct me if I'm wrong, but it was with the mayor, and then he had, you know, like a fellowship kind of thing with different pastors in the area, and then they would have like a meeting once a month, I believe, or something like that. And then, you know, someone would come to the Tuesday meeting. So maybe that's something we could do and see kind of how, you know, Mr. Roser and Ryan want to work it out, maybe to have
Sounds good.
Community connection.
Thank you. Any other old business? Okay, we'll move on to new business.
I have something.
Go ahead.
Wright Hunter Cemetery made the state news. It is the only African-American cemetery in the state of West Virginia that's on the historic preservation. So I just wanted to mention that. And also, former councilman Ronnie Booker, his brother passed. So I was just wanting to see if we could have a moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else got any new business?
Mayor, I have something. You know, the Woodrow Wilson Flying Eagles, of course, congratulations to the soccer team. What an impressive three, way to go, soccer team. But you know, Woodrow Wilson's volleyball team is also en route right now to the volleyball state meet. Tournament. And, you know, elementary schools feed into Beckley City, elementary schools feed into Park, Beckley Stratton, and... All three, Park, Beckley Stratton, and...
Woodrow.
Woodrow Wilson. So all of those middle schools are being fed by those elementary schools. And I want to congratulate the Crescent Elementary Volleyball Team, who was the volleyball, for the champions for the county. They're right around the corner from where we live, and congratulations to them. I believe the basketball team also was the county champions, so...
That's awesome.
Crescent's doing a lot of good there. And something that I also want to invite, you know, the city of Beckley is blessed that our city provides curbside recycling every other week for wards 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5. And this Friday, which is America Recycles Day, we are going to have an open house at the E. Paul Barley Recycling and Education Center from 8:00 a.m. till 4:00 p.m. We opened that building in October of 2004, so 20 years. And so, if you want to see what our recycling staff does, if you want to sign up for curbside recycling, Pam and her crew, they do a great job every other week picking up recycling, so thank you, Pam. So everybody's welcome to the recycling center this Friday from 8:00 to 4:00. That's all I have.
Pam, on that, no, leaf pickup, it's when?
The 18th.
The 18th?
The 18th.
Okay. All right. Anybody else got any new business?
I also want to give a shout out. I think it's very exciting that we won the state championship in soccer. I don't know the last time that Woodrow Wilson won a state championship in any sport, but the fact that we hosted, Jim Morfield, myself, it reminds me, we need to go get our signs or take our banners down. We went out and put up banners, and just the amount of fans that was there was unbelievable. Unbelievable.
Those banners were, "Welcome to Beckley, West Virginia." I was so impressed.
Maybe we tried.
That was wonderful. That was good.
All right. Next, we'll move on to public comments, and first is, let me look, Mary West.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Mary.
I am back once again. Same old issues, but a different day. But I want to say to you all, we just had an election, and I don't care if you're on the left or the right. That is all one bird. And we are the Caucasus in the middle. We are the caucus of that bird. So you all need to be listening to the people's hearts and minds. That bird has a head and a tail, and neither side is the head, neither side is the tail. So we need to let you all know, pay more attention to what we need as people and citizens. And the rule is still the rule. Nothing is being done. I looked at Stratton Elementary, and I know that's my sign over there, chief. Tell him to slow down. I would like to have my sign back, please. If you all can do something to help, not just my street, but we have a lot of streets that speeders are running up and down. So if you all can help us, we appreciate it. And I don't want to have to keep begging, and, you know, you all talking about, well, when the leaf cleanup starts, y'all trees are still back there behind my house messing up everything. So when are you all going to clean those up? See, those are your all's trees. They're not mine. And nobody would agree and say, because the city of Beckley has always taken care of the alleyways. And I don't know why, all of a sudden, when it hits 2024, that it's no longer the city's problem. It was in 2001, because you told me to move a bicycle tire out from behind my building that it was sticking out a little bit in the alley, so you had to get it out. So would you all please help us? And think about what I just said. We are the caucus, and we are the heart and the minds of what you all need to be thinking about. Listen to us, please. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mary.
I do have a correction. Shady Spring Elementary won the county basketball tournament. I'm sorry. Not Crescent, I'm so sorry. Crescent was...
Two runner-up.
Yeah, runner-up, yeah. I'm sorry.
That's all right. Go Chipmunks.
Go Chipmunks.
All right, next up, Gary Bowlin.
Mary and I work together.
And Mr. Bowlin and I and other people are trying to do more things in the city of Beckley for the veterans, and not only the veterans, other people that is in need. So Mr. Bowlin will be letting you all know about the Veterans Mental Health Advocacy Council. So Mr. Bowlin, will you step up and...
I will do my very best, Mary. She's the one tough lady to follow. I'll guarantee you that. Thank you, folks. Couple of weeks ago, I was in here and I introduced myself, and I was asking y'all for space. And it came through. We had, last Saturday, we had a stand down up in Princeton. That's what the federal government gave veterans, what was left over. And some of that stuff that's left over, we had asked for the space so we could store that for the homeless veterans when we have a drive for the homeless veterans. And we came up with things. We, also, we're working out with the homeless, the other veterans that's trying to get back out in the workforce. So we're coming up with furniture and dishes and pots and pans and things with that. So we got that in storage, too. The big thing, though, that I was asking space for was bicycles. We got Christmas coming on. Folks, I got, well, close to 300 hospitals, bicycles to repair and give out. Seventy of them is just cleaning up and pumping up the tires. Right now, with Christmas time coming on, the three sources that I've got for bicycles is the Walmarts, one out in Fayetteville, and two here. It's Christmas time, and daddies are putting together these bicycles, and they can't do it. So they bring them back to Walmart, so they give to us foundations. The Marines are, have this drive that they want brand-new bicycles to give out for the Toys for Tots. Well, this is a gray area. They're not brand-new, but they've never been rode. So we correct the, we put them together, we finish up the repairs and everything. Folks, I need some space to do that. It's a volume of work that needs to be done. So the space I'm going to ask for for tonight is there's four bays out there at the Armory, where y'all used to have for repairing cars, police cars, or...
Thirty seconds.
Something like that. There's four bays out there that's been set and empty. It's right beside the metal container that I've got about over 200 bicycles there. I got some down here in Fire Station Number One. I don't know if you, he used to be fire chief here, is my brother Arnold Bowlin. And he's turning this all over to me. He tagged me. I'm in. So I'm trying to do this for kids. So the drive is going to be up to December 1st, so I'm going to be making my run-arounds and doing this. If you folks can give me the space, I'll guarantee you 40 hours work week.
I can tell you one possible solution. I don't know if you know Charlie Howke, or I think it's Ron Hedrick. They're starting the, they moved the Veterans Museum. I was there yesterday for about an hour.
We're asking for that museum, yes.
Sherri Hunter's on the board. She just let me know that. Anyway, they've got space out there. They're in the process of moving a lot of the stuff over from Harper Road over to...
We had to transport all that in pickup trucks and move it over there. We've got stands.
It's close to the Armory, so I thought maybe it's a possible.
We got the stands, we got the tools, we got the parts, some of the parts and everything we knew. We're not asking for money right now. I'll guarantee you, I might do it later, later.
Mr. Bowlin, oh, I'm sorry. How long would you need this space? How many weeks would you need it to get the bikes ready?
Right now, the bikes is, for the Marines, it's December 1st. For the VA, down, the VA, we've got six families down there right now that will be adopting.
Yeah.
That's a December 1st Salvation Army. I haven't gotten in touch with them. But churches, schools, I want to do this year round. I just don't want to do it unless it's Christmas. And we got next Christmas to do. I anticipate 500 bicycles by next Christmas, if you'll, if you just let me do it. And I'll be doing it year round. The other thing is, is when veterans are wanting to have jobs, getting back up on their feet, we want to give them some transportation. That's the reason why we're working with the St. Stephen's Church, Mother Clay, Clayter down there.
Mother's Children Clayter.
The problem with the Armory is that that's not our property.
That's Raleigh, I know.
Yeah, you have to get a...
But you're the first pick.
The board, okay.
I am white equations when I'm driven to doing something like this. So you just point me in the right direction.
I think the Veterans Museum, just with the timing, them moving to the new location, just might be a possible. I mean, they've got a lot of space out there. They got, like, garages and things like that out there, too, so...
The Veterans Museum.
Right, it's right next to the Armory.
Harper Road?
It's the old sheriff's building.
Sheriff's Department.
No, it's the Eisenhower Drive.
Yeah. I spoke to Mr. Hedrick about that, and he says they're not going to have the space for us to do anything.
Not even for the next few weeks?
And they are moving from Harper Road...
Yeah, they are, but...
And that's the area we are interested in as well, so that we can do other things.
Y'all give me some space, and I can come up with 100 bicycles by December.
Come and talk to me afterwards. We'll talk about it.
Okay.
Thank you, Gary. Appreciate it.
Thank you all. And God bless you. As you preach, y'all bring some smiles to children's ears.
Next up, Marshall Rickman. Come on out, buddy.
Good evening, everyone. I hope you're doing well. Try not to take up too much of your time. As most of you know, I'm the band director over at Woodrow Wilson High School. We have a very hard-working group of kids this year. We ended up placing fourth in the state for high school marching bands due to government cuts this year. I have a very hard-working group, and right now, we are working on fundraising, Money Up. We are taking our band down to Orlando, Florida this December for the Pop-Tart Bowl. We're going to be performing during halftime at that game, not just going to watch. And then the kids are also going to get a couple of days at Universal to enjoy while we're down there. I think it's an excellent opportunity to show off to the rest of the country, the world, you know, watching the game. I know sometimes they broadcast halftime. The musical ability that's here in Southern West Virginia, especially here in Beckley, we had some really amazing, hard-working students. And we're just here tonight asking for any type of monetary donation you guys might be able to give to support our band in this endeavor.
Anybody got any questions?
I am. I was waiting to see if y'all had any comments. Anybody have comments?
I will say, Friday night, I sat out in that cold on those bleachers so that I could see your halftime performance. Kids sound great. You've done an amazing job there.
Thank you. They are working very hard. I'm very proud of them.
Sir, I want you to know that 52 years ago, that's a long time, I was a member of the Woodrow Wilson High School Marching Band. I was a trumpet player. I still play my horn. my horn.
Awesome.
And I do, raise your hand if you were in a band anywhere, were a band member, yes? And so, congratulations, that's job well done, so proud.
I'm also an alum of Woodrow, I graduated in 2011, tuba player.
Very good, very good.
With all that being said, we do have paperwork that you all need to fill out.
Okay.
We are trying to streamline and get in to line our accounting system, so everybody is accountable and it's fair throughout. So if you could see Jessica and myself after the meeting, we can set you up with the paperwork and talk through it, what you are going to need to do. Thank you. I know, I sponsored a young lady, and I'm very proud of the band, and you guys sound great.
Thank you.
Hey, just give us, like, how much money do you think you have to have to go on a trip?
Well, the whole, the whole amount for the band, back when we signed up in April, was a hundred and twenty thousand.
A hundred and twenty thousand.
And that ended up being about fourteen hundred per kid, that pays for a four-night hotel down in Orlando, two park-to-park tickets at Universal, the ticket for the bowl game, and half of them, half of the expenses, the charter bus is going down.
Right.
Yeah.
Paying for that, so.
When's the last time y'all, you all did that several years ago, did you?
I think the last time that Woodrow's band went there was when Mr. Andrew Pennick was the band director there, and they went down to the same bowl game, although it was called the Camping World Bowl at the time. I know that when I was at Woodrow, my senior year, we went to the Gator Bowl in Jacksonville, and then my sister, when she was in the band, went to the Chick-fil-A Bowl in Atlanta.
That's wonderful.
So the band has been to these trips before, but now that we're definitely growing, it's, you know, a bit more expensive.
How much you think you've raised so far, just to give us an idea?
I think right now, we need about seventy-five hundred.
Isn't that amazing, that they've already raised over a hundred thousand dollars?
We've had a couple fundraisers here recently, too, kind of fall through on us, we were trying to set up a bingo, we had prizes, everything ready to go, and there was just some issues getting bingo licenses throughout the county and all of that, and so that kind of fell through, and that was one of our big fundraisers, we were going to be doing.
And I'd like to ask, in most towns, we try to do the bowling trip, it's about a year, year and a half in advance, notice that we have to have?
Sure.
We've done this in pop parks.
Way to go, congratulations.
He also has a student that the Thanksgiving Day Parade is coming up, that you see in New York, they take two kids from each state to make an all-American band, he has one of the two in this state.
That's wonderful, very good. Any other questions? All right, thank you, man.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just ask to make some comments here. Guys, I've been out in our community, I drive around my ward a couple of times a week, I count how many people are on the street, I participate in things here that, thank you so much, Jill, for every opportunity, because I've enjoyed everything I've done with you so far. But guys, we've got to change the narrative here, and I know that that comment was made most recently by someone else in town here, and some people were angry. We know we have problems, we have things that we need to implement, you know, like street safety patrol, we need to get implemented, we are waiting for Mr. Roser to come in to kind of get some things under our belt. But what I do want to say is there are so many positive things in Beckley, there are so many good things, I mean, look how the community comes together. We've got, we know we've got to fix the problems, but we've also got to change the narrative, this, oh my god, this is so awful, and did you see this, and do you know about that? We're still living in a great place. I love my hometown, I love the people here. We have so much to be thankful for. You know, go up to the theater and watch the collective do their production of Heathers, or, you know, come to a community event and hang out, we need to have a new fire chief. Did you guys realize that? You want to introduce yourself? You want to introduce yourself? I'm putting you on the spot.
My name is Ed Thompson, I'm the active fire chief through chamber.
Thank you. Thank you. We have so much to be grateful for, you know, our high school is doing so well in so many things, we have great elementary and middle schools, we have a good city council that cares about everybody, regardless of what some people say or think. And even when I mistake one person for another in here, Willie, I'm still sorry. But we have a lot to be grateful for, let's be positive, you know, look what we're doing here, look what we're doing there, look at these opportunities. Let's change the narrative, let's, as my friend Mark Carmen says, change your mental state of mind, change your mental address. Okay, I'm done preaching now, thanks.
All right, thank you.
I'll just line up the public comments, but may I now?
I'll let you get your time, how's that? Tom Mosley, come on up, Tom Mosley.
Thank you, sir.
I haven't gotten a head up in there, so.
Did I preempt you, I'm sorry, Tom.
We're good, though. So, you know, talking about city safety, okay? You guys ever watch a cat chase its tail, go round and round, getting nowhere? Okay, that's kind of where we're at. You know, I come up here and talk safety, Mr. Mary comes up here and talks safety, and we do have speeding, it's horrible. You know, we talk to Chief Bayle, we talk to the police, they can't be everywhere. They put out extra patrols, and it slows down a little bit, and then following day, we get ninety miles an hour up city street. We don't know whether you speed humps, speed bumps, grading, whatever we can put in, so we need a commission to sit down and look at the options that we have for each scenario. What works on LaRue may not work on Hole, may not work on Yewert, but we have to look at each situation, and that's why I'm pushing so hard for this safety commission. We have that, we have the homeless situation out there which needs help, but we also have aggressive pan handling. I walked into Sheetz the other night to get a drink, the guy sticks his head around the corner, asks for two bucks, and he hides back behind there so the employees can't see him. That's not someone that needs help, that's someone that's harassing the public. You need to be able to go to the ATM or go gas your car up without dealing with that. And I spoke with the employees, they had no idea. Oh, well, he bothers us too, well, pick the phone up, call the police, do something. Education, we don't have the educational tools out there to let people understand what's available to them, and that's what I'm asking this council to put in order, this safety commission, so we can get to where we need to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. All right, Christina.
Thank you for letting me speak, it's Christina Basden. I just had a few questions. As far as the transfer agreement for Pine Crest, would I be able to get a copy of that this evening? And I would also appreciate a copy of the employment agreement with Michael Roser, if that is okay to be made public. I also would like to make a request that any of these particular contracts that come up in the future, that we can have them readily available either on the city website or on Facebook for people to look over prior to the meeting, so they understand what is being done here in the name of transparency. Thank you.
Thank you, Christina. All right, at this point, I'll make a motion to go into executive session.
Some move.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Anyone opposed, say nay. Very good. All right, may I have a motion to leave executive session and come back into regular session?
Some move. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. All right, very good, and may I have a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
Thank you, council.